This is a test.
The City Council, May 8, 2023. Let's all turn off our cell phones. As we meet tonight, let us remember that today we are stewards of land that for the recent arrival of the European Heritage for us, the honor to send ancestors and stand and salute the flag. The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which it stands. Very first thing that I, the Chair of City Council do is call a recess to the urban renewal. So
Thank you, Paul. I'm going to call the Urban Renewal Agency meeting of May 8, 2023 to order. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda?
There are not.
Okay. Is there any business from the audience for urban renewal? This is going to be really easy. Okay, let's see. There's a hint of the agenda. We've got a presentation. I think Tara and Kyle. Are either of them here?
I believe Tara is presenting on Zoom.
Oh gracious. Hi Tara, welcome.
Oh, good evening. Thank you for having me here this evening. My name is Tara Camp. And I'm a partner with Polly Rogers and Company. And we are the financial statement auditors for the Urban Renewal District. And so I'm here this evening to present the results of the June 30, 2022 financial statement audit. And what I'll do is go over the governing body letter. It's a nice little letter that summarizes everything we're required to communicate with you. And then if you have any questions, I'd be happy to take them. So on page one of the letter, we cover the purpose of the audit. And for the Urban Renewal Agency, the purpose is two-fold. We perform the financial statement audit in order to determine if the financial statements are fairly stated. We also perform the Oregon Municipal Audit Law Minimum Standards procedures, and those are compliance procedures over different ORSs. On page two, we summarize the results of the audit. For the financial statement audit, we issued an unmodified opinion on the financial statements. That means a clean opinion with no reservations. For state minimum standards, we found no exceptions or issues requiring comment, except as noted on page 35 of the report. And no separate management letter was issued. So overall, very good results for the agency. Further down on the page, we noted that we did encounter difficulties in performing and completing our audit due to the agency not being ready for the audit and the scheduled time. It was just a tough year of transition for the city and agency, so we do not expect that to continue in the future. We had no disagreements with management over accounting and auditing items. And then lastly, starting on page three, continuing to five, we summarize future accounting and auditing issues. And these are standards applicable in future years that may affect the financial statements and also the workload of the finance office. So it's always good to keep up on what's coming there. So overall, those are the results of the audit for the agency, and I'd be happy to take questions if you have any.
Thank you, Tara. Any questions from the agency? Okay, I think thank you for your time.
All right, thank you everyone. Have a good evening.
Have a good night. Any items from agency members? Okay, then I'm going to adjourn the Urban Renewal Agency meeting.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will reconvene the City of Hood River City Council meeting. I think that we are on item number four. No, we are on item number three, business from the audience. Do we have any business from the audience this evening, Jen? Thank you. Then we're on item four, presentations. We have the Energy Trust of Oregon.
All right, so I have Karen Adler from Energy Trust. She's a Senior Outreach Manager with Energy Trust, and she's gonna have a presentation for you guys about how Energy Trust has benefited the city already and resources they have available that can benefit us in the future. And she'll be having a short presentation and then time for questions.
I'm gonna work to share my screen here. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Sorry, always gets complicated here doing this stuff. Let me make sure I'm sharing the right screen. Okay, can everybody see my screen?
We see your screen. Your audio is a bit thin. We're working on the audio on our end.
Okay, great. I can hear you all pretty well. I can just project my voice a little bit here.
That's much better, Karen. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you. I wanted to say thank you, Haley, for arranging this connection with the council. As Haley mentioned, I'm the Senior Outreach Manager for the Energy Trust of Oregon and support communities very directly in eastern Oregon, the gorge, and central Oregon. I work from a home office where I've been the past 16 years, and I began working under the programs as a contract employee about six years ago. And truly, my role works to provide information to customers and stakeholders like yourselves across all of our program markets. So that's residential, commercial, agricultural, industrial, and renewable. And really, you know, I'm making sure that the eligible customer base is aware of our resources and incentives, but truly, you know, working more collaboratively and deeply in the community, it helps us learn about what might hamper your ability to participate in our programs and how we can change and work better in community to provide and reach more of our eligible participants. So in addition to my role, and I know that the Energy Trust has addressed the council several times, there's a lot of smart people, technical experts, and field staff that are based around the state that also support and have worked with the city in various capacities. And I'll get into a little bit more of that as I just do an overview of programs. So just covering a very brief agenda here, just doing, did our introductions. I'm going to talk a little bit more about the residential program and the commercial program and then other areas of opportunity. And as Haley mentioned in the introduction, what I'm going to do is actually just pepper in what Energy Trust has worked with on the city in the past into those program overviews. So there's sort of a more of a tangible connection about what the program is and how the city has currently been accessing them. So just a quick overview about Energy Trust of Oregon, and the reason why I'm sharing this information is because I I think largely Energy Trust presence in the city of Hood River has largely been around the energy plan work and a lot about resiliency and renewable energy. But one thing I wanted to focus on is that our customers serve all customers of the utilities that you see on the screen. And with a focus in the city of Hood River with Pacific Power and Northwest Natural. And so a really simple way of thinking about it is that if any project the city is working on or working with a developer on or a project owner on has those two utilities at that site, they are eligible for what we have to offer. And this funding, you know, is part of the state legislation tariffs and other requirements, and it's a percentage that's essentially taken from these customers' utility bills and put into the programs for energy efficiency and renewable energy that we have. I think something to emphasize to hear too is why, you know, because it's coming from the customers and the utilities, I feel like it's my mission and Energy Trust mission to make sure that customers in the city of Hood River are receiving those funds equitably. So one of the things I wanted to talk to about with the council today is a little bit about why we're doing a lot of work with the River Energy Council and also wanting to engage a bit more with residential customers in the community. Really why our work is important. And talking about that with energy usage and energy burden. Simply put, the less money you make, the greater your energy burden will be. And you have to redirect dollars from your energy costs towards your other needs and wants. And, you know, a lot of communities face relatively high energy burden. Very recently, Energy Trust helped fund with the Hood River Energy Council work that we're doing a study, or I should say outreach study with the next door to work with community members to learn more about their needs when it comes to solar and weatherization to help them save money. But also thinking about how we engage just outside of the residential customer sphere, if you turn this energy usage discussion and talked a little bit more from a business perspective in regard to economic development, a lot of things I know are important to the city. You know, what you're talking about is overhead burden in a business. And so the more a small business or business owner is paying in their energy usage and overhead, the less they have to invest back in their business and grow. So for our residential existing homes program, this was a large focus of what we did with the next door supporting the city of Hood River to learn a little bit more about community member needs. Energy Trust has basically what we call a standard program track, which is a menu of energy efficient equipment, insulation, and windows that a consumer can purchase and have installed by a licensed contractor and then receive a check from us in the mail. Then other things that we were doing more outreach with is learning more about the income qualified customers in the community. and what their needs might be specific to how they can access programs. We also have instant incentives that a customer would receive at the time of service. Currently, right now, I know they're doing some exploration in the city of Hood River, engaging the small business owners to provide a no-cost lighting offer. I know we're talking about the residential programs right now, but those are where the business owner or the individual homeowner doesn't pay anything upfront. And then they receive the full benefit of the energy savings. And in turn, Energy Trust pays the contractor on the backend to do that work. So it's a pretty seamless process. We have a few things like that for residential customers, and we've worked to get the word out on that. Another example, you'll see at the bottom, that we're doing right now is a no-cost offer for ductless heat pumps in manufactured housing. And considering that many communities do wrestle with the housing affordability piece and also that it's very difficult to motivate property owners to make investments in properties because they typically don't pay the utility bill. We're seeing that these no-cost ductless heat pump offers are getting a lot of traction, particularly in affordable multi-family housing. And we'd like to be doing that more in your community. We also have a new pathway called Community Partner Funding, which is an enhanced funding track, so increased cash incentives that we offer. But it's really designed around working hand-in-hand with a community-based organization to deliver home energy assessments, increased incentives, and connection to the contractor base that we have that supports that and offers typically what the cash incentive would be that someone would receive in the mail upfront as a discount on the invoice. One of the challenges, and I just, you know, wanted to put it before the council, too, for any type of input that you might have. It's available for organizations statewide that we've onboarded onto this process. There are some minimal insurance requirements that we ask an organization to carry. But we haven't identified a provider in the gorge to do this type of work and would just welcome any input from the council that we could have. We've talked with the Nextdoor. We've talked with the Housing Authority. I think one of the things that we struggle with a little bit is that a lot of organizations are low in capacity when it comes to staffing and struggling to get the contractor base to support it. But this is an option that's becoming quite effective in other communities, and it would be great to find a way to collaborate more with the city. We also, and this has been a focus of the conversations that I've had with Haley through the Hood River Energy Council. So we do have a new homes program that is part of the Energy Performance Core Program. And I know that some cities are trying to tackle, you know, that piece that we talked about before, which is energy usage is part of the overall affordability of the house. And this Performance Core Program essentially is modeling and testing that allows the builder to know exactly what the utility bill is going to be per month and can market it as such, making sure that, you know, it's affordable. And in the case of our Energy Performance Core, it has a way that the realtor can actually market it this way. And we'll be working with the community in a couple of months to provide a training to realtors a little bit more about this, as well as other resources that they can access. It also, in addition to the cash incentives paid out per home, has an early design assistance incentive that we pay out to have everybody meet, talk about energy goals for the project, which the city has invited us into a couple of the projects, including the Rand Road project. And so we've been glad to, you know, provide that level of support and assistance to talk about energy-related goals and figure out what incentives make sense. We also, which is new as of the fires in twenty twenty, have offered increased incentives for communities who are recovering from natural disaster and increasing those standard incentive tracks to help communities build back. Now, the city's not in this type of position, but we do recognize, you know, these sort of climate-driven events are happening with greater frequency and just wanted you to be aware of it. We also have additional resilience incentives for things like triple-pane windows, rigid exterior insulation, and unvatic, unvented attics, which also help to make a property more resilient. The one thing I wanted to also pause here to just talk about things that I know I've talked about with other communities is, you know, how to motivate the market, how to support the builders in your community and having housing choice. And, you know, what does a program like this mean outside of utility bill savings? And I think the real takeaway from this is that participation in a certificate program like this, and there are very, very many, and this one comes with cash incentives for participating, is that we're kind of like a second set of eyes on the project. We're supporting the builder to do more advanced construction techniques, which are higher quality, longer footprint for them to last. They're more comfortable because the building envelope and the building shell. I know that a concern, you know, has been with the community being a public safety power shut-off community. And if, you know, the power must go off in the winter or the summer, how resilient is your home to standing up to those ambient temperatures and keeping it from passing in when your HVAC system isn't working? So, you know, things I think would be important, you know, to talk about in larger-scale community. And of course, there's the health aspects of having a tightly sealed but well-ventilated home to prevent from fire, smoke, and allergens coming into the house. We also have a few programs for manufactured homes, which we get asked about a lot because typically manufactured homes do fall outside the resources for a lot of programs. We have free services. We have that regional heat pump promotion that I mentioned before. I mean, manufactured home replacement pilots, so wanting to work more in communities to replace those older, more expensive homes where, you know, the typical homeowner is paying upwards of five hundred dollars a month in the wintertime to heat their home. And this, you know, is a very good cost recovery. And we've just, I just learned that we are now offering it as a full-time program. It's no longer a pilot. Multi-family, I was talking a little bit about this previously. We've worked with several properties in the city of Hood River and provided these services to do site walk reviews and more custom solutions. I think this information is pretty straightforward, so I'll jump over to the Commercial Existing Buildings Program. So I'd say at this point, outside of our renewable project portfolio, this is a large part of what we spent time working with on the city. We have standard incentive tracks where, again, it's a menu that we've worked and provided custom resources and incentives to several projects within the community. And it's, this slide says qualifying new natural gas. It also, it includes electric as well. And, and, and it's, there's no qualification so long as it meets the energy efficiency rating of the equipment. And we've been able to, again, work with the city and businesses within the city to provide these types of incentives. But for the, the Commercial Existing Buildings Program Custom Track, we work with the city to provide energy assessments to five of the high-energy usage buildings to identify a project list of things that the city could consider doing to help save energy and lower operating costs. One advantage to doing that, you know, even if the city hasn't taken action on it, which is very common, it helps inform your budget. And it helps you plan and forecast for what those facilities might need. And again, what might help, you know, lower operating costs all the way up onto things that, you know, you might need to be considering for a capital improvement measure. So this is, you know, something that we've been able to provide and are glad to be able to work with the city in that capacity. We also have a new commercial program, and this was part of the multi-family discussion that we just recently had with the Rand Road project. And really, these are market-driven solutions that are new construction or major renovations that include that early design assistance incentive, which is that money we pay upfront to talk about energy-related goals. They can be based on the type of usage in the building. Is it an office? Is it a restaurant? Is it a hotel? Is it an apartment building? And then, you know, we have tracks that we put the different projects on for the design. We pay incentives for solar planning if there is a renewable energy aspect. Separate track for the actual installation and construction. And then after the building's built, we'll actually pay for the commissioning to balance the building's HVAC system and make sure that it's running as efficiently as possible. Then other things here, which are a little bit also, I would say, off-menu, but I think important takeaways for the city's programs is that we do, you know, offer those technical resources to provide energy reviews that allow some reporting and planning that the city can help forecast on. We do have contractor connections. I recognize that that's a challenge really in most communities. And we do have contractors that we have established that have knowledge about our programs, that are energy experts that we can bring into these conversations, mechanical engineering professionals and such. We also do a lot of event sponsorships within the community, and that's really taking off again post-pandemic. So I look forward to seeing you all in person. The other thing that you may or may not know is that we support financially rare interns for communities who are working on projects that have an energy component to them. And so a lot of how Energy Trust became involved with the Hood River Energy Council was through a rare participant that we were funding with the Mid-Columbia Economic Development District. We have some small-capacity grants to talk about energy-related work. If the city wants to do more of that, we'd be glad to talk about how that could look. And we also offer community data reports. So if you're applying for a grant or need other information, and we certainly work with Haley in this way, where we provided information to help inform grant and funding opportunities. And we also write letters of support. And then feasibility studies would be the other thing, again, that I mentioned. With, one is a building assessment, the feasibility study, more niches under our renewable energy portfolio will pay for a portion of the cost to see if something is a viable project or not. And that's the last slide I have, so I can pause there to see if you all have any questions, hopefully, and take up too much time.
Thank you, Karen. Questions? Go ahead, Grant.
Yeah, one, you mentioned the promotions for the ductless heat pumps. How long is that ongoing for?
Right now, it's a program with no sunset date. So all of our funding is subject to essentially a calendar-year budget that we established with the Public Utility Commission on the energy savings the utilities need to achieve. And so what I know is that there's lots of opportunity, and they're trying to make sure that that budget is very expansive so we don't miss out on these opportunities to get in front of these property managers. Is there someone I should be talking to?
Thanks, Karen. It was an excellent presentation. I appreciate all that you guys do. Obviously, there's like a whole, you presented a lot, and there's a lot of opportunities. But in your opinion, what is the number one or two things that the city can do and interact with you on that we can make a big difference?
Well, some of our success has come in getting closer to the planning processes and economic development work. We do our best and provide the most when we are involved in projects at an early phase during the planning process. And, you know, if there's things that we can work on better together, I typically can tap some city connections to find out, you know, as an example, this lighting offer that we're doing. Who should I be talking to? Are there new, are there properties that we should be going for? Are there properties that the city has that we should be going after? And I see that as a, as a really good gateway and a place for collaboration where we could be working more together without a lot of effort. Meaning, you know, if you're comfortable passing the lead on, we chase it down. The other places, you know, it's that sort of operating budget conversation that I know a lot of municipalities struggle with. I, in the interest of full disclosure, I participate in a lot of committee work in the city I live in, in Pendleton, on the Planning Commission and on the Housing Committee and on the Parking Rep Committee, and I know operating costs are really tight. And I would also just offer, you know, we have different programs. One I did not mention here and probably should have is our Strategic Energy Management Program. It is a cohort-driven model where, and a lot of cities participate across the state, where you work with an energy coach, you take things like the reports we provided for those high-energy usage buildings, and you establish an incremental, you know, easy-to-bite-off plan of attack on getting those, achieving those energy savings. And in addition to the incentive that we typically pay you, we also have milestone payments that we give you in addition. And we have money for interns to help with any of the energy data needs, you know, that could support somebody like Haley in her role. And we've found that to be really effective, especially for any organization or government that has multi-campus buildings that they're just trying to keep that operating cost low. So that could be another place to look as there's capacity.
Do I have a, it sounds like keeping the lines of communication open is important.
Would Haley be the contact?
I'm looking at Haley, and she's nodding yes.
She's nodding yes.
Yeah, thank you.
So it seems like.
Talking to Haley would be a good interface, just like you've been doing before.
Yeah, and Haley said to ask you something you didn't ask. She's amazing. I think you probably all know, she's been a tremendous asset to just working with the city and really enjoy learning from her as well.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you.
Anything else for Karen? Thank you for coming. Thanks for the resource. Glad to be with you. Right, we will move on to the next presentation by the Oregon Department of Energy, EFSC.
As they get ready, I'll just make a couple remarks to say you might remember. A couple meetings ago, I shared with you that you were being appointed as a special advisory group for the Energy Facility Siting Council for the transmission line that's proposed for the river. This is where we get to talk about the jet cloud. So super thankful the Energy Department staff came from Salem to give you a presentation. And you have responsibility for comments. If you have comments today, if not, we can put together, you know, something more official depending on what you need from us. But with that, do you have a presentation that we need to bring up?
Two, yes.
Okay.
As far as the advisory committee, I think I'm gonna have to recuse myself. Thank you for your attention. Probably not all of it today, but I appreciate that. Thank you. But the record shows that Councilor Cooney has declared a desire to reduce himself.
Members, thank you for having us. My name is Chris Clark. I'm a senior citing analyst with the Oregon Department of Energy. I'm joined by Matt Cornet, the department's assistant director for citing. We are both staff to the Energy Facility Siting Council, which is what AFSEC stands for. Thanks. So thank you again for inviting us. We're here to share some information about the Cascade Renewable Transmission System as well as the state citing process. Okay, thank you. Sorry, it's not my week for technical stuff. Okay, so on March seventh, the department received a notice of intent to file an application for site certificate for the Cascade Renewable Transmission System. That's kind of a mouthful, but it is the very first step in the process of obtaining a site certificate from AFSEC, which is the state permit for energy facilities. The notice of intent was submitted by Cascade Renewable Transmission LLC, which is a joint venture of Power Bridge LLC and Sun2O Partners. Which is a joint venture of Power Bridge LLC and Sun2O Partners LLC. Um, the primary applicant has been Power Bridge LLC. They're a company based out of Connecticut. Uh, that's developed a couple of similar underwater transmission lines in the uh New Jersey and New York area. Um, due to its size and location, uh, the transmission line is considered an energy facility, subject to citing review by by FSEC. Okay, um, for a little more detail, uh, the transmission line would be a uh three hundred and twenty kilovolt. Direct current transmission line that would uh span about a hundred miles between the Dallas and Portland. Uh, the majority of that is proposed to be cited in the bed of the Columbia River where they would be installing it with the jet plow. I did include a lot of technical information about that. There's a pretty good diagram of it in the notice of intent, which you can get on our website. Uh, essentially how that works is they have a a barge or a boat. That pulls kind of a submersible device that has these high pressure water jets in it. They blast water into the bed of the river. It fluidizes sediment down to a depth of ten to fifteen feet. Uh, and then also weighs the cable at the same time, um, and as they kind of travel down the river, the sediment settles back on top. So that is, that's the technology that they're using. And I will say, we are not experts in that. This is a pretty novel project for us as well. So in addition to that, um, there there are some areas of the river where the bedrock is pretty close to the surface of the bed of the river. In those areas, they'd just be laying the line on top of the rock and covering it with rocks or these concrete mattresses to weigh it down. Um, and then there's additional segments that would be buried out of the river. Uh, either trenched uh on land or installed using horizontal directional drilling. Uh, which is a uh process that's used in a lot of different applications. Um, so in addition to the transmission line itself, there's some related or supporting facilities, uh, as we say in. Uh, the state citing world, um, those include two converter stations that are proposed to be constructed near both points of interconnection. The converter stations change the DC output that's on the line to AC output that can be used on the grid. Um, there is one proposed to be constructed uh very close to the Big Eddie Substation and just outside of the Dows. Um, that would be connected to the the substation with about five hundred feet of overhead, five hundred KV uh alternating current line. Um, on the Portland end, um, they are proposing to build a converter station in the Portland River Gate Industrial District. Which is in North Portland, kind of, I think. Uh, a little west of St. John's. Uh, uh, that would be connected to the PG Harberton Substation. Uh, using about three miles of la- line that's uh undergrounded in road right of ways. Then installed underneath the bed of the Willamette River using horizontal drilling. Um, just have a few maps to show. Uh, this is a map of the entire route. Uh, as you can see. As as you can see, it connects the Dows and Portland. Uh, I also just wanted to point out that in a number of places, the line is proposed to cross into the Washington side of the river. Uh, and around Stevenson would actually be trenched in the road. Uh, of Washington Route fourteen and some other local roads uh to avoid the Bonneville Locks and Dams. Any parts of the line that are in the Washington, in Washington State are outside of our jurisdiction and they'd be subject to review by Washington. Uh, FSEC, which is uh very similar to our agency. They have an extra E there, the Energy Facility Site Evaluation Council in Washington. So. Uh, state agencies love acronyms and we apparently love very similar, so. Um, so I won't go into these more detailed local maps very carefully. Uh, what's shown. Uh, on the screen now is the eastern uh end of the line. Um, the the yellow is the proposed route that was on that previous map. The black, thick black lines are the extent of the site boundary. Um, the applicant has requested flexibility to cite the line anywhere uh in that site boundary, so. There may be some alterations to the the proposed alignment that they've included in the NOI based on. Uh, things they find when they're out uh actually in the field doing their their surveys. You can see here, the red overway is the city limits of uh the city of the Dells. Um, this this route would, the line would would cross through the city on land, but then also would include some of the waters uh that are. Uh, I, within the city limits uh and within this city's jurisdiction, so. We move on. Uh, you can see in other places, this is the city of Mosher. Um, the line would again, it would be located in its current alignment. Uh, it would be located outside of the city limits. Um, but the site boundary does include a portion of the river that includes the site boundary, so. Uh, what they've said to us is that it could move and it could move into the Mosher City Limits. Um, for the city of Hood River. Um, the proposed line right now would actually cross through a portion of the city's jurisdiction. And so, uh, so as you can see, there's there's nothing proposed on land here, but but it is within your jurisdiction, which is why we're here today. Um, similarly, uh, this shows cascade blocks, but it also shows where the line would come out of the river on the Washington side uh to avoid the Bonneville Locks and Dams. Um, there are also uh. Avoiding uh some, uh, I think it's not, I I won't say it's a super fun site. I'm not one hundred percent sure of that, but there is a a site of. Uh, okay, just just south of Brad Bradford Island, um, so they they will also be avoiding that. Um, and then finally, as the line gets into Portland, um, they'll be uh cutting across Hidden Island at about the midpoint. Going under the North Portland Harbor using HDB again and then being buried in the right of way of Marine Drive. Uh, to the River Gate Industrial District. Um. From there, it is entrenched in road right of ways to the Willamette River where it'll go underneath the river and interconnect with the BG Substation. So with that, unless there's any question about the facility itself, I'll turn it over to talk to talk about the citing process.
Go ahead, Megan.
Just real quick, um, is the the cable is being placed ten to fifteen inches or ten to fifteen feet below the?
Ten to fifteen feet uh below the surface of the bed of the river.
So that, and because they say somewhere else the trench is like eighteen inches wide, so it can go that far?
Yes, uh, yeah, eighteen inches wide and ten to fifteen inches deep. They say that that is, I believe that that is what the Army Corps, they think the Army Corps will recommend. Um, to avoid any. Uh, one, any damage, any acre strikes, uh, but also any uh uh EMF radiation or thermal uh F one into the river. Um, the lines themselves are both, I think they're six to eight inches in diameter and there's a bundle of two of them with a fiber optic cable. So it is a pretty small package, but again, that is, it is a pretty deep channel into the bed of the river.
Thank you.
Hmm, thanks, Eric Backman. Uh, members of the council, as Chris said, my name's Todd Cornet. I manage the Energy Facility Siting Division. So the the at the Oregon Department of Energy, so the department does many things. We just do one thing. Um, so our primary purpose is to review large scale energy projects. So we're functionally, we do the environmental review, so we, you know, we don't take positions on these projects. We're much like a planning department. So we have standards, which I'll talk about. Um, there's a process. We run the process. But what I'll start by saying is, we're gonna throw a lot at you. We've already thrown a lot at you. Um, we're gonna throw the project at you. We're not familiar with this type of project. Projects. We do a lot of wind, solar, other things, even transmission, but not this type. So we're still kind of coming to speed on what this all means to. But we're gonna throw a lot of, you know, details of the project and the process, our process at you. Please stop us at any point in time if you have questions. And then also, we're happy to come back. We're happy to have phone calls, emails, whatever it is. Um, so local governments are an integral part of our process, which I'll also talk about, and we just want to make sure that, you know. You're fully, you know, brought up to speed as much as you want to be brought up to speed and participate as much as you want to participate, so. Um, so yeah, as I said, our our primary responsibility is to review large scale energy projects. So we've done that since nineteen seventies, um, been doing it for a long time, you know, started with these large scale, you know, uh, coal. Power plants, nuclear, um, and we've converted over time. You know, to largely renewable. Um, we don't do all the projects, but we do um a lot of the big renewable energy projects. Uh, we're also here from cradle to grave essentially. So we not only review these projects at the very beginning, but we have a fully formed compliance program or a fully funded compliance program. So once these projects are approved, if they get approved. We're there on an annual basis to, you know, ensure they're being constructed, operated, and ultimately retired, taken off the landscape. Um, consistent with all the conditions of approval. So, as I said, we are the department, um, Chris talked about this, we are not the decision makers. The Energy Facility Siting Council are the decision makers. So they are seven volunteers. Um, they are appointed by the governor and confirmed by the senate. But think about it, much like a planning commission. Um, they, you know. Volunteer their time. We do like a planning department, you know, all of the sort of day to day work. We work with the applicant, public. Uh, in this case, local governments and um, you know, ultimately we make recommendations to them, but they're the decision makers. So the citing process is a consolidated review. What that means is um most state agency requirements, uh, most state agency permits, uh, rules, statutes, regulations, standards. Local government standards, they all get consolidated to our process. Uh, and then become the jurisdiction of the Energy Facility Siting Council. And the reason that is for these large projects is there can be a lot of different permit requirements and and different standards. So consolidating them makes one big process, but but, you know, that's intended to be much more efficient than a bunch of individual. Reviews, especially if those could have contradictory decisions or conditions, so that's the whole idea of our process. Let's see, is it the? The right one or the little? Down that one. Okay, great. So Chris had mentioned this before. Um, this isn't all of the things that are within the jurisdiction of the Energy Facility Siting Council. Um, but it's many of them, so you can see, we deal with a bunch of varying things. Um, and a lot of these, we don't review all of them. There are, you know, local governments, um, primarily counties. Will have jurisdiction over some wind, some solar, it's kind of based on uh different parameters, whether it's megawatt or um. Square miles or other thing. For high voltage transmission line, which is what we're talking about here, um, it has to be at least two hundred and thirty kilovolts. Has to be more than ten miles and in more than two jurisdictions. So this triggers all three of those, um, therefore it is our jurisdiction. So the importance of this slide is not necessarily to go through all of the details of our process. Um, it's really to kind of know where we're at in the process. And it is, you know, you can see the box around the first stage. That's where we're at. We're at the very first stage, and that's important because. There is, you know, there's a lot of time. There's a lot of time that it's going to take. The applicant has submitted their notice of intent. Which is exactly what it sounds like. It's their notice of intent to apply. It's almost like a pre-application conference, but a very big pre-application conference. What they've done is they've provided um desktop level analysis of what they want to do and where they want to do it. They have not done, they may have done some onsite work, but but our process doesn't require onsite work at this point. It's really, the intent of this is to provide us, the department, uh, you, local governments, the public, you know, anybody who's interested in this project. Kind of an early opportunity to take a look at it and say. What do we think? Do we have issues? Do we have concerns? Um, it allows, um, you know, people to provide input to the developer early on, you know, to help them. But in our process, what it really does is it helps us. The the second chevron to the right is the project order. And in our process, what that means is essentially it's a laundry list of what standards apply to this particular project. So we get the notice of intent, we provide a a notice to everybody. We held public information meetings last week. Uh, on Tuesday, we're in the Dows. On Wednesday, we're in Portland. Uh, we're seeking public comment. We're seeking comment from uh local governments, um, you know, state agencies. Um, and we evaluate it, but what that does is it gives us the ability to look at all this information and establish within that project order. What are the specific standards for this project, you know, in this location? Uh, the notice of intent is valid for two years, meaning they submitted it um May seventh, we'll say May seventh. March seventh, sorry, we're not May, or we're just actually May, um, March seventh. And so they have two years from that date to submit their application, their preliminary application. So you can see that's the third sort of stage. If they fail to submit it, then the notice of intent expires, they have to reset. They have to start the notice of intent process over. So that's the kind of importance of of the timeframe. And then the other, I think, importance of this, as you can see, at the very bottom, the kind of blue box is the agency coordination. This is where um as as an appointed special advisory group, um, you know, we will provide notice and seek your input. All along those steps of the way. Um, and we'll have more detail, you know, further along, but again, what I'd said is, at this point. What do you think? You know, if you have general comments, those are great. If you have specific comments, that's great. Um, you know, the the more, the better will be helpful for us. So getting to our standards, there are sixteen general standards that apply to all facilities. Doesn't matter the type. But they'll scale up and scale down based on, you know, the location. So if we have a, we don't do gas plants anymore because those are prohibited, but if we did a gas plant and it was in an urban industrial area. You know, meeting the um. The Fish and Wildlife Standards, probably not going to be too significant for that particular project. But you take a solar project in, you know, a big game winner range with important, you know, migratory aspects, that could be a pretty big deal for them. So again, these standards all sort of scale up and scale down, and and that's established as I talked about in the project order. Um, so one of the, um, well, I'll talk about land use uh on the next slide. But the way our process works is the burden of proof is on the applicant. That's an important thing. Um, it's a standards based process. They have to show in their application that they meet all of the applicable standards. And again, as we've established, the details of those within the project order. If they can prove that in in the record, you know, based on evidence that they submit in the record, then they deserve to get an approval. If they can't meet all of the standards, then they do not. It's it's more nuanced than that, but that's sort of an easy way to understand it. We we don't pick sides. We don't care. It's not our job to care about whether it's a good project or a bad project. It's our job to ensure that we evaluate it against the standards. And if they do meet the standards, then they should get an approval. That's really how it works. So the land use review, and this gets into your role as a special advisory group. Is, and this is also a little more nuanced in this project. Um, is, um, the applicant has a choice. They actually can choose. To have the low, the the local land use requirements evaluated by the local government, whether that's a city or county. Um, so that's in our process called the path A. Uh, choice, they they can also choose path B, which is to have all of the local land use requirements. Consolidated into the jurisdiction of the Energy Facility Siting Council. The applicant in this case has elected to do that in their notice of intent. They can change that. Um, they have to make that final election prior to submitting their preliminary application. Once they do that, they're set. Um, but they can choose. Um, and again, at this case, because there's multiple jurisdictions, um, they've indicated that they will uh. Be submitting that to FSEC for review. But where that's important for us, um, is we have, you know. State agencies, local governments and tribal governments that are an integral part of our process. So we provide notices to you. We seek your comment, your evaluation. When it comes to land use, we're not an expert in your land use criteria. So what we want is for you or for you to delegate that to your planning department. Um, to work with us to say, okay, if you were going to do this review, what would the standards be? And if all of the standards are very clear and objective, great, but if they're not, if they're subjective, if you've made interpretations on. These types of facilities, which I doubt, but theoretically, then, you know, what kind of interpretations have you made in the past? That's the kind of information that we want to get from you to make sure that we are. Doing a good job of evaluating, you know, and implementing your ordinances. And there are multiple steps along the way, so right now, we're looking for, again, what would your ordinances be? Later on, it will be, once they submit the application, did they meet, you know, did they submit enough information? Later on, it will be, once they submit the application, did they meet, you know, did they submit enough information that you would then deem this complete? And then when we make our findings, um, like in a staff report, would these be the types of findings and conditions that you would make? So that's the kind of input that we're going to be seeking from you. Chris is going to talk about this a little bit later, but we do have the ability to enter into reimbursement agreements with, um, local governments as well. So, should you want to do that, we can absolutely do that, and you can get reimbursed for all of your time, um, that you spent. You would simply log your time, invoice us, um, we bill the applicant. So you bill us and then we bill the applicant, is how it works. So the, the bullseye on the slide, um, so you can see the center, um, Chris talked about the site boundary. So that was that black boundary. So that's the area that they're studying. You know, they are theoretically could build, you know, in those areas, um, you know, and they want to give themselves flexibility, which makes sense. In the notice of intent, they have to do, uh, they have to, they have to do the desktop analysis that like I talked about, based upon these specific study areas. So for historic, cultural, and archaeological resources, they have to do that all within those, the boundary of that site boundary, um, that you saw on the maps. The land use, they have to go that site boundary and then a half mile out. And then you can see that starts to increase for other resources, five miles, ten miles, twenty miles. They've already had to do that. That's a requirement they have to submit as part of their notice of intent. Now, one of the things that we have to do as part of our project order is determine, should these study areas also become the analysis areas? Um, and the significance of that is, there's a lot more work that has to be done in the application. There's a lot more on-the-ground work. So, for example, if somebody, you know, has done a literature survey, and there's areas of high probability of historic and cultural archaeological resources, um, then, you know, we'll say terrestrial on, on land, um, then they may actually have to go out and do transects of subsurface probes at certain depths that's established by the, um, State Historic Preservation Office in conjunction with, uh, information from, you know, local affected tribes that could be, uh, concerned about potential archaeological resources. That can be quite expensive. So what we want to know from you or anybody else is, you know, are these distances good? Do they make sense? Should they be increased? Should they be decreased? Um, again, that could have a lot of impact on the cost associated with the applications. So, we want to make sure that we get that correct, um, but if you have any insights into these distances, that would be great comments that we would be looking for as well. All right, and that was my last slide. So, like I said, please feel free to ask us any questions that you have.
Let's take you up on that right now. You guys want to, anything now? You want to wait? Area.
Okay. Okay, uh, so I'd already covered a lot of this, so I promise to be brief. Um, so, uh, as Abigail mentioned at the beginning, we did send you a memo about a month ago asking for comments. Specifically, our request is for a list of applicable substantive criteria, as Todd said, that would, that is the, uh, comprehensive plan provisions or land use ordinances that you would apply if, if the city, sorry, if the city was reviewing this project. Um, we do understand that because this is an in-river use within the city's jurisdiction, there, there may not be any, and that's fine. Uh, we're just really looking to you for a confirmation of, if, if that's the case, or if not, and there are, there are criteria that we should look at, um. As, as Todd mentioned, we really do, uh, understand that you are the experts in your own comprehensive plan and your own ordinances, so, uh, that is why we're here. Um, in addition to all that, we do welcome any other comments you have on the proposal at all, uh, as far as format. Um, I think, uh, you can send them in a letter to us if you do decide to delegate this to the planning department or your staff. Uh, we would just ask for some sort of written documentation of that. Uh, if, you know, you are prepared to make comments here tonight and they're captured in the minutes, that's probably submission two. Um, uh, otherwise, uh, yeah, we'll look for your comments by June first, hopefully, and if more time is needed, just let us know. Um, again, as Todd mentioned, this is just the first of several times you'll be hearing from us. Uh, we'll be asking, once we get an application, we'll be asking again if there's been any changes to the applicable substantive criteria. Uh, if, or, or any interpretations, uh, have come out since the last time we asked you. Um, we'll also be asking again for any recommendations or concern you have regarding compliance. Uh, since at that point in time, we'll have a little bit more information. Um, we'll also be asking if you, uh, think there's anything missing from the application that would prevent us from making a defensible decision, uh, either of compliance or non-compliance. Um, and then, then finally, uh, once we get the complete application, taking all that feedback into account, we'll produce our draft proposal order and, and we'll ask you for, uh, similar comments and, and recommendations regarding our proposed findings and conclusions, um, and, and whether or not there's, uh, any changes requested to our proposed site certificate conditions. Um, yep, Todd went over the cost reimbursement piece, uh, I think pretty well. If that is something you're interested in, you can contact me. I think our, uh, fiscal analyst, Ashley Fleming's contact information is also included in the memo in your packet. If you want to talk to her directly, uh, she knows all the, the nuts and bolts stuff about reimbursements. And then finally, um, we just wanted to point out that, uh, we are happy to provide as much information as we can tonight. But, um, there are also a number of helpful resources on our webpage. Uh, the URL is at the bottom of the screen there, but, uh, you can find our public guide to citing, which, uh, gives a more in-depth overview of a lot of the things that we talked about tonight. Um, as well as some fact sheets about the citing process. Um, there's also a public comment portal, uh, where anybody can provide comments on this project, and you can also see any comments that have been submitted already. Um, it's pretty helpful and a, a new, uh, feature that we've been rolling out that's been pretty successful so far. Um, you can also access the project page, uh, which has our notices, the notice of intent provided by the applicant, and other helpful information about the project. So, um, lots of good stuff there, um. And there should be links to, uh, a lot of those pages in your, uh, memo as well. Great. And with that, um, we're happy to answer any questions, uh, you all have. Uh, I've included my contact information on the screen there, where you can, uh, also get ahold of me if you want to chat offline.
Thank you. I'll start if that's all right. Um, if we were in West Virginia, no offense, we would be here having to stay. Tell us why, like, all these energy facilities are the, just the thing, and this coal plant is going to be just the thing. So I just kind of had that idea like that. We live in Oregon, but I, I really appreciate that, uh, our Department of Energy is not bought and sold by the in- industry, and that's a huge difference, in my opinion. Um, I also have this sort of image of like cartoonish electrocution where somebody's hydrofoiling across, and like they miscalculated where they're going to put this huge pipe of power. And like, somebody snags on it and it's totally damp, totally injured. So I assume there's clear rules about it has to be, the top of this pit has to be thirty feet down, and it's not like right off Wells Island where you fall if you're bored and you stand on the sand, like, depth is obviously really important. And then I also was thinking about, like, when you're churning up this fifteen feet of sediment, it could be a really bad salmon fishing day. And I don't know how, like, one would evaluate that. It seems, it scares me a little bit that it's so new, that like, you guys do lots of things, but haven't done one of these. Um, so, I'm sure over time, all of these kinds of topics, I'm, I'm not the only one who's thought of them. Uh, staff, do we have any sort of expertise on, like, does our planning rules have any rules about submerged giant cables?
We did a very quick review of the comp plan and our, um, and our code. I don't think there's anything specifically in the comp plan. I think in the code, uh, Dustin identified seventeen point two-two is the natural resource overlay, which really applies to wetlands and Rikersian buff- buffers, but, uh, it could possibly apply to this. It was.
Yeah, I think, uh, the, the, the term novel came up. Uh, I think this would definitely fall in the novel. Um, we have goal five, which every community in Oregon has a goal five, uh, which refers to, uh, protection of natural resources. Uh, out of that comes some, some comp plan language. Very rare does it have the, the, the river basin included in as a discussion point. Uh, we've been in conversations with the county as well. Um, Todd may know, uh, you know, this, parts of this, and forty miles of this that fall outside the urban area of the city will be within the, uh, the Columbia River Gorge National Scenic Area. Uh, so we were trying to, um, work with them to, um, kind of accomplish our own continuity of regulations, whether there was going to be some unnecessary or duplication of efforts. If they are going to go through a, a Snickers Resource Review or Scenic, uh, national or natural, cultural, recreational resource review and protection, that may serve us well. And so we, we have a couple pieces that we think are tangential. Um, but certainly some oversight for those naturals that fall in the county's jurisdiction.
And I believe you presented to the county February or March or April already, so you've got some comments from them.
Yeah, we had a staff webinar meeting with them, but, um, yeah.
Then just the final sort of, still a comment maybe, is, I was surprised you didn't come tell us why this is like needed, like, this is a private company who's doing this. There must be like a huge demand for gorge electrical transmission or something like that. And that, that actually to me is quite interesting, like, this is a new piece of the grid. We didn't, did, did, did we know we needed that? Or, so, addressing that going forward about why this is a public benefit project, or at least worth the risk. I mean, it's not no risk, so the, the marketplace realities of that, I think, would be a relevant part of, of the ongoing presentation.
So, I can address that a little bit. So, when we had the public information meetings in Dallas and in Portland, um, after we just pretty much gave this very similar presentation to what you did, the applicant gave their presentation. So, they got into more of that aspect. So because we're the department and not the applicant, you know, I, I can talk a little bit about that. Um, but, um, I don't, I probably won't go too far into that. And what the applicant has indicated is, you know, uh, basically Oregon, Washington, California, all moving towards, you know, one hundred percent clean energy, uh, grid. You know, and the, the, the state has, you know, requirements about that getting to twenty thirty. So what their evaluation is, you know, is most of the renewable energy is going to be developed on the east side of the Cascades. At least the bulk of it, because that's where the space is. Wind, you know, most of the wind's there, and, and we're seeing very large solar projects out there. Um, most of the demand is on the west side. Um, and so there's limitations in the transmission system. And so what their idea is, is, you know, just to create another opportunity, which is why it would be a, a direct current line versus, you know, an alternating current line. So it would be, you know, from the Big Eddie Substation, direct current one-way from there to Portland, essentially. Um, so providing that renewable energy being produced on the east side to the load demand, which is on the west side. Um, and their evaluation is really hard to do transmission on land. And it is, um, you know, it's a very difficult thing, particularly in this case. Um, there was a project, um, about ten years ago that Portland General Electric was proposing, called the Cascade Crossing. It was proposed from Boardman to Salem. Um, and they got pretty far into the process and then ultimately pulled that one. Um, so that one, you know, that, I don't know if that would have done exactly what they're proposing here. Um, but, you know, these transmission, it's very complicated and controversial. People don't like transmission, so it takes a while. So, this is their idea, since they've done this, um, already on the east coast, to put it in the better Columbia, again, not without issues, and we will learn what those issues are. Um, some of them we know, some of them I'm sure we will find out. So, um, so replacing terrestrial with, um, submerged issues, and I don't know if on balance one is better or not. Again, for us, it doesn't matter. For us, it is, they either meet the standards or they don't. Um, that's really what it comes down to. So, we're going to evaluate that. The other thing that's important to know is we have a need standard for transmission lines. So, they actually have to prove need. Now, for wind, solar, other generation, there's no longer a need standard for those. They're, they're market-driven based on our process, but for transmission, they have to prove actual need, uh, in the information. And so it's either two aspects to that. One is the system reliability, meaning they have to justify that sort of for the grid in this area. There's a reliability aspect to it. Or lease cost plan, which usually means it has to go through the Public Utility Commission, that it's the cheapest alternative to, you know, take power from one area to the another. So, I don't know that they can meet the second one, um, that'll be their option to kind of try to prove that. But definitely that sort of system reliability one, they'll, I'm sure, try to meet. So, mo- more to come on all of that.
Very helpful. Thank you. Megan.
Um, two questions, one for Dustin and then one for you two. And first one, is the Columbia or the shoreline unidentified goal five resource for the city?
Uh, the, the shoreline is, we have a, uh, the process called the, the E-Z process, E S E E, uh, which is goal five for the Columbia River Banks. It impacts, um, essentially from the hook, um, down to, uh, the Best Western Hotel. So that's the, that would be the bank and twenty-five feet, and there's an area that's protected, and we have a process that we've gone through on that, but.
Okay, so, if I, within half a mile of the project boundary would cover the shoreline?
Yes. Yeah, half mile, for sure.
Um, and then, um, thank you for coming. Um, I, it sounds like all the local governments are reviewing this. Is there, I think, a bit to like the potential salmon impacts? I assume like NIMPs and NOAA are also going to be reviewing this.
Uh, yeah, and I did want to just say, you know, we, we're still in this coking, uh, phase of this, and a lot of the issues that you brought up are exactly the same issues that we are currently sorting through. Um, the lead federal agency for the review is going to be the Army Corps of Engineers. There's a couple of, uh, permits that the applicant will need to get from them, um, uh, including the section four oh four, I think, clean water, uh,
Yeah.
permit and, and the section four oh eight to affect the, the navigation channel. Um, so, they are, they are, the lead agency, they'll also be doing all the NIBA process. Uh, we've already, we haven't, haven't seen it yet, but we know that the applicant is currently developing a sediment sampling and monitoring plan, uh, to address some of those impacts. Uh, they'll have to be monitoring the sediment plume, um, all for the federal process. We will also review that and, and have our, uh, water specialists in the department, as well as, uh, we're Department of Fish and Wildlife and other state agencies review that as well, the, to, uh, ensure that it meets the state standards.
Okay. Um, that's good to hear that. I think people that are more expert than us are, will be kind of taking care of a, a lot of the standards you're looking at, uh, and we can probably abdicate our responsibility for that to them. So, thank you.
Answer my questions and answering other questions. Thanks.
Anything else? Thanks for being here. Thanks for taking good care of this novel project.
We, we will be in touch.
I guess that, so, Abigail and Dustin, what do you need from us to make comments or go forwards?
I think, I don't think I heard anything that we need to formally, um, package and give to them by due first for their comment period, but we will continue to work with them, um, as the project progresses or doesn't progress. Okay, thank you.
Great. That takes us on to the consent agenda. I would entertain a motion.
Move, we approve the consent agenda.
Moved by Grant.
Oh, second.
Second by Megan. Uh, any discussion about the consent agenda?
Um, just a real quick minor edit to page twenty of the packet. I already emailed Jen. Um, I just wanted to let you all know that, um, the motion there swapping out project P one um, to currently known as west side sidewalks, uh, we changed to currently unknown west side sidewalks, because that was more what the actual motion was. Yeah, just, just fixed it, so.
Great, thank you. Uh, thank you for noting that, Megan. Uh, given that tiny, uh, improvement, any, any further discussion? Uh, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed, share votes, I, motion passes. Uh, discussion item, sanitary sewer service, Kevin.
Thank you, Mayor, and, uh, councillors. Uh, next item on the agenda is in pages forty-two through fifty of your packet. Um, property owner of Spock, what we wrote, five forty, Frankton Road, this year with us tonight. Um, it's got a septic system issue. You're interested in connecting to city sewer outside of the city limits inside the urban growth battery. We've got a policy in effect to, uh, from resolution two thousand and sixteen dash twenty-five. This typically requires annexation prior to connection to city sewer. So this is, um, a request from the property owner, and, uh, I listed. a request from the property owner and I listed some issues on page forty-three of the packet that you might find compelling. If you're interested in um allowing that connection, but property owner is here with us tonight and and she'd like to speak with you. Um, I'll be here for any questions.
Thank you, Kevin.
Come on up.
And city council members, moving in this Heidi Lagos, and I reside at fact forty Frankton Road, just outside of city. I appreciate your time this evening, as well as the hours of time Kevin Liberty and other city and county employees have spent assisting me with my sewer situation. Um, to give you a little context, four years ago, I had a dream to build an A D U on my property. Um, currently, my dream is to flush my toilet without fear. With that, I want to request that the city council approve my request to allow our property, my property, to access the city sewer via the stub in my front yard adjacent to our potentially failing septic tank. I say potentially because I'm unaware of any septic tank failures beyond the condition of the tank and the tank's assumed age. Um, I'm not sure if you had a chance to read my letter, but I'm going to touch on some of it. Um. So I, four years ago, approached the county uh inquiring about the A D U process and was directed to the health department, which dictated that I needed to have the septic tank inspected. Um, in order to proceed, we hired a contractor to perform the work. Um, neither of us knew where the stub or the septic tank opening was. Um, we found it unfortunately by him prodding it with a metal rod until he couldn't pull it back out and said it's here and it's steel. I had no information on it up until that point. Um. So it was it was determined it was at the end of its useful life and possibly deteriorating to the point where it would not withstand being pumped as I had asked them to do while they were there because we had lived there at that point for about seven years. So uh, this revelation had caused us to decide to pursue city sewer access as all of our surrounding neighbors had been using. Uh, when we moved into the house, we'd been told that there was an option to access this city sewer, but we didn't see there was a need to do so at that time, nor did we have the money, nor did we have the need. We had two children. One was in diapers and one was fresh out of them. But that was eleven years ago. So fast forward to four years ago, um, when we approached the city public works, we were told we simply needed to locate the sewer stub, submit an application to access the city sewer and pay a fee. Um, the excavator worked with the sewer to determine the location of our stub. After several conversations with the city in which we were directed to the access, all of a sudden the city said uh, there's some new changes coming and we couldn't in fact access the city sewer. But it turns out those changes had occurred a few years prior. And unfortunately, we had not been made aware that they were coming. So we started looking in annexation because we found that we were not um allowed to replace our septic failing tank. If sewer access was within a short distance, believe it's three hundred feet to be precise, um, to our home, which it is. So uh, we're unable to compel our neighbors creating a conundrum to the city to annex because they're on city sewer, like everyone around us is, and they don't want to pay more in top of the taxes. Um, I don't know how much information you have, but this small little parcel here is ours and it's dwarfed by the two parcels that lead, if not more, to um city uh city limits to our east. Um, so uh, about a year after this all began, a neighbor to the west said uh, we're going to annex and we're going to annex you and we're going to annex the people to your east. And I said, hooray, because with their property and property that they own that they were selling, uh, that would create that conundrum and swoop us in. And I didn't have to worry about my neighbors. Um, who did not want to annex nor their neighbors. Um, I would just be swooped in. Well, after about a year of trying to discuss the plans of that property owner and their development plans and sales, uh, they just stopped talking to us. Um, I I was the only person who seemed to have um the most interest in this annexation. And the property was sold, the new owners took over. Um, I just, you know, years would go by and my friends would all say, don't worry, it should be fine. And I don't usually live like that if they said that um brakes on my car were looking worn and maybe smelling. I wouldn't just assume I'd be fine until I had an accident. I replaced them. So I couldn't replace the septic tank. Um, and if you're familiar with the uh, the rules, you know, you you can't access it unless there's a an unusual and compelling circumstance. And to me, it seemed that um, living in a home with a potentially failing septic tank um, and not being able to even pump it while we wait and see what's happening with our neighbors to create this annexation seem kind of unusual and compelling at least to me. And I'm hoping that you will agree with that. I have a lot of information. If you have any questions, I'm happy to provide it. Hopefully, um, you've at least gotten somewhat familiar with the situation. But again, I have a lot of information to answer questions. Um, one question that has come up is whether I'm aware of valid consent to annex agreements with my neighbors that would create that conundrum. And even after hiring a reputable land use attorney attorney and consulting with another, I still don't know for certain if they have that. Um, I know it's binding on predecessor homeowners, but both of those um parcels have been owned by families for years. And again, you would have to have triple majority if there wasn't current consent to annex agreement in place, which I presume there is not, but it's not something that's easy to find. And with that triple majority, uh, it basically states if more than half of the owners of the land and the territory who also own more than half of the land in the contiguous territory, it's complicated. And a real property therein representing more than half of the assessed value of all real property in the contiguous territories consent in writing. It goes on to basically lead me to believe there's no way that I would stand a chance enforcing my neighbors to annex. Uh, the only thing I seem to have in my favor is um eligible voters, but some new neighbors have moved in and they may have more voters than we do. So I don't even know. I just know my situation feels like uh it needs to be resolved. And although I was really hoping that um, I B C Construction with their plans to develop the Summit View property would also create this annexation in which we were working together to um, bring me into, even that's been about a year and a half and it just seems not to be proceeding. And I feel like I need to be because I want to resolve the situation. So I don't have some sort of a catastrophe, which in addition to the gruesome thought that it would cause um septic waste to pump into my drains in my home could also create a public health hazard. And I want to avoid both of those scenarios. So that's what I have to present. I'm again happy to answer questions now or later.
Great, thank you.
Yes.
Stay right there. Uh, councillors, questions for staff or Heidi?
Uh, I suppose um what what happens with the existing tank? Should you be hooked up to the sewer line? You just leave it or?
It would be decommissioned.
Would be decommissioned, be pumped out, et cetera. Okay.
I sympathize. Um, went through a similar sort of thing with most. Um, uh, do we since ha- since a bunch of your neighbors are hooked already hooked up to the sewer, can we not are are there not consents on file for all those neighbors? Because that's that's the condition as far as I'm aware that in order to be connected to the sewer, even if they were outside, they would all have sign consents at some point somewhere.
Well, my understanding is that
Excuse me a second. Dustin, do you have an answer to this? Or Kevin?
Maybe you can answer that a little bit more in depth for you.
At this point, we don't have consent to annexation, valid consent to annexations. And even one property that is to the east, we have zero consent.
Do we know when those other properties were hooked up to the city sewer?
I have not done that research.
I can address that question, but maybe not very specifically. Um, I know that when the sewer was brought in through our neighbor to the west to to create sewer for um so that's when that neighbor jumped on. And I don't know precisely when the neighbor to my east got on, but I'm assuming it was in a similar timeframe. And in case anyone's wondering, why don't you just replace your septic tank i- if the circumstances allow? And they actually, they could, although Mike Matthews did state um repairs of septic systems, excuse me, for those who aren't familiar, Mike Matthews is the head of a county environmental health supervisor. Repairs of septic systems in high density areas with properties of less than one acre where sanitary sewer is accessible is not in the best interest of property owners or public health policy. If we can't get on the city sewer, we will pursue replacing our septic tank, which I don't want to do because although I would sleep better at night, the investment to do that, coupled with the fact that at some point in the not too distant future, annexation will occur, whether through the urban growth bounty by the city or through my neighbors. Um, it doesn't make any sense to do that other than to not have to wait and see and end up with a dire circumstance at the end.
I want to understand, the dire circumstance hasn't happened. You're worried, but it isn't failing. It hasn't failed. It still functions.
To me, we would have to inspect the tank, which the inspector was unwilling to do because he said it's thirty-something years old. Of course, it's not going to be fit for what we had originally looked at it for, which was um to add an A D U. But he wouldn't even pump it. And over the years, I was told, well, just ask him or ask someone else if they'll come back and and or pump it. And they said, no. We don't want to touch it.
How long ago did he say, I won't pump it? I don't understand.
Oh, that was four years ago when I brought him out for that inspection.
Thank you. Other questions? Yeah, go ahead, Tim.
I guess it's a question, Kevin. So really what we're faced with here is providing an exception to this resolution number two, two one, two zero one six dash two five. And the rationale for that would be that's a compelling reason to have an exception.
Sure. Listed a few things in your packet, um, in the support from the county environmental health supervisor. Uh, the fact that the property isn't supposed to be developed. There's an existing sewer line that chases to the site. Doesn't need to be extended. Just um connect a lateral to it.
In in the properties nearby or connected to cities.
I haven't researched every property. I think Heidi knows the neighbors better than I do, but it sounds like many are currently connected.
So the intent really of resolution was to take a property that was far away. It was going to be developed and then create this sewer line that was going to go off just for this one.
I actually have an opinion about that, Tim. It's the the original mistake was letting folks on. And so we, I always think of it as like the orange rind, right? We've got the city, then we've got the ride of the orange. But the problem is, once you have the rind, then it isn't putting a long sewer line to it. Then just the person, one dot outside the orange rind says, oh, it's not a long way. I'm just right next to it, but I'm not adjacent to the city. So it 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 was very difficult to stop the orange rind from thickening. So that's that's part of this.
And the the lack of annexation has implications.
Yeah.
Great. Um, it's a question for Kevin. Um, how many unique circumstances are there similar to this one on the west side? Do you know?
I'm not aware of any others at this time. There have been a few that have come up over the years since the policy was adopted. We've heard uh from the county health department supervisor that there have been several circumstances similar to this that have come up.
And just for my fellow councillors, as soon as you stop uh pumping out your septic tank, it needs to come out at some point. It's not going to sit there forever. Eventually, it's too full and there's nothing you can do about it. You can't jet the lines enough. You can't do anything else. Eventually, it's just done. So.
So and pardon my ignorance on this, is the proposal to actually annex this property?
Not immediately. The recommendation would be to have the property owners sign a consent to annexation agreement so that at such time that annexation is feasible that they would come in. Uh, but again, right now, without valid consent to annexation agreements and willing property owners to obtain contiguity to the city limits, it's truly not eligible for annexations.
Although we do have a valid consent to annex in the form of predecessor homeowners consenting and it's binding on us.
If we're if we're getting into the exception business and I don't know who the right person is, could we make an exception to the annexation requirement versus a request to 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 connect to sewer? Could we say, yeah, I know you're not supposed to annex because you're not contiguous, but we'll let you.
All right, I got that. I got that. And um, we we do have attorney to get into this. Um, contiguity uh to the to the city limits is a state mandate. Um, one one further issue that that makes our circumstances unique um, beyond the state mandate is the I G A uh that we have uh on file that limits our ability to do a cherry stem annexation. Yes. Um, so in certain circumstances, um, outside of this county or outside of this U G A, uh, there would be an opportunity to get creative with the geography, um, use road rights of way and uh, these other territories to to create a cherry stem. Uh, that is not uh in the cards with our I G A. So contiguity is required, cherry stem not allowed by by I G A. And and the real professional is is
Dan, anything?
Yeah, Dustin and I talked about this uh today and and I was viewing it the same way you are, I think, uh, Paul. That, you know, the the policy that this council adopted ten years ago was no sewer without annexation. And isn't there some way to annex this? Um, and you know, if you look at the drawing in the record, you know, it shows the whole area has, you know, these kind of old sewer connections were allowed. And that was from, you know, many decades ago. And it's hard to undo that. Um, and it wasn't a an easy way to annex this spot of property for this particular purpose. And it's just, um, you know, the the cherry stem along the right of way would have been perfect, but for this I G A that the the city's entered into. Um, and I think the um, it's entered into with the um uh, is it West Side Fire District? Who is it? The I G A with?
Ice Mountain Water and West Side Fire, right?
Yeah, so it's West Side Fire that years ago appealed one of our annexation decisions and it got kicked back from Luba just because they had no findings at all. Um, and as a result, we entered into this I G A that you know, has a bunch more terms than we really needed to go into. I I don't know. I wasn't around at the time. I don't know how difficult that negotiation was, but you know, at at this point, I don't know that the West Side Fire even cares if this land, this parcel is annexed into the city or not. Uh, large vast swaths of its territory, yeah, I would object to that, but this one, I don't know. So.
What is the circum- I'm sorry, go ahead, Megan.
Um, I'm going to unphrase this badly, I think, but you know, consent to annex and a modern one that actually will will meet criteria uh clearly really important. Is there a way in addition to that to add, um, you know, like as soon as you're contiguous that you you have to like the landowners have to petition for annexation because we have a bunch of valid can to consent to annex out there, but no one's doing the work and spending the money to actually gather those and and get it in there. But it's I certainly would want to see this property annex as soon as possible. And I don't really want city staff to have to do the work. Is there something, is there a trigger point where we can say like landowner has to do the work? And not just consent if we ask, but actually like proactively do.
Did you catch that? They're they're talking about a term to a a trigger rather than a consent.
Oh, I think both because
Well, I think I think the consent is is given, you know, uh, any post or extra territorial connection. Valid consent, waiver of any terms and limitations. I think that is, that's an easy yes. Um, the trigger to annex is is the next question, Dan. You you have development agreement in terms.
I guess it would be upon demand by the city. That's how I usually draft these things. Consent to annex upon demand by the city.
So there's, I mean, I I think that's a good backstop, but there's no way to also say, and you have to do it. Like above in addition to the consent.
I guess, I mean, you could do that. It's it seems like an impossible task for just this one homeowner to do. You know, we've we've in the past many years have dealt with a number of developers with with larger pieces of property and they're going to make money off it. And we have not so far, uh, since you adopted this policy, faced a request by just a single homeowner for uh, the sewer connection kind of as a before the health hazard and uh connection order uh is is justified. They just come to the city and say, look, our septic system is kind of on its last legs. We really generally you can't repair these things when they're within a certain distance of sewer, which this one is. And so, you know, it would be if when if and when this septic system fails, then it would have, then it would fall into the health hazard connection category anyway.
Um, so this is, they would have already connected the sewer. They've got the consent to annex, but then there's also some sort of agreement that if some neighbor brings the city line contiguous to their property instead of just that city asking, they actually, oh, the city lines here, I have to now do the application just for my property. You don't have to figure out the neighboring. I know that's the barrier. But can you can you make, instead of the city having to ask, can you make them ask, submit the application for their property once city limits are there?
Yeah, we we could, we could demand it. Uh, uh, you know, as a condition of this, you know, require them to sign and record a consent to annex. It's not really feasible to force them to annex until they're contiguous, though. That's a fundamental state law requirement. You can't have pieces of incorporated city floating out there unconnected to the city.
I think that Heidi's property will yep, talk me out of this. I think that Heidi's property will never be contiguous to the city because her neighbors to the east have no incentive to annex.
Kevin, go ahead.
I I think we have development options. So the the big difference that we have is um surrounding properties are of scale and size that have development potential and those are where we really have leverage to say, if you want to develop and split your property, but for con- annexation uh and but for connecting to the city under our terms, will 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 you develop and subdivide your property?
Right. But then in in the meantime, we have a constituent that's waiting on developer to go out to the west side and develop that whatever piece that happens to bring hers in, right?
That's correct.
That's 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 the fun position we're in. We appreciate your proact- productivity in this, by the way. It's it's really good to address the subject system before it goes bad and after.
And if I can, I believe Kevin mentioned or maybe Ms. Legosha that I think there they did anticipate that there would be a development forthcoming and and it hasn't happened. I think that's I B C summit view. Kevin, is there any more you can say on that?
Yeah, uh, builder in town I B C has been uh working with a property owner at zero summit view on an annexation. We had a pre-application conference about two years ago now. So as Heidi mentioned, it's taken quite a bit longer than uh the developer expected to move forward with that annexation. But um, when we spoke with them, they were interested in uh annexing not only zero sum of you, the parcel they wanted to develop, but some intervening properties to get contiguity. And um, there is an adjacent parcel that's across the street from Heidi's that was going to be included in that annexation. That moves forward, then there would be uh the ability for Heidi's property coming.
So back to my question, if that occurred or anything in a similar setting, can we, is there something we can put on there that says that landowner will now act proactively apply to connect?
I think it's just delivering a message um to the developer. There's a need to find the owner of zero sum of you to.
No, I don't want to bind some of you. I want to bind.
Counselor Saunders, I I think if I can try to read into, it sounds a little like when uh we get a request for a vacation, right? Like if the city does it, there's some costs and stuff, but if the owner initiates it, right? They absorb the legal costs, the survey costs, whatever else might come with it. Is that what you're seeking here is the somehow a cost in this that Ms. Legosha would need to both initiate as soon as she becomes eligible and two, she would need to assume any costs that would be related to making the annexation happen?
Yes, and I think especially the initiate because what I don't want is what I ha- I know we have other places in this city of there's valid consent to annex that are out there that we aren't asking because we haven't done, we don't have the time to research it. And I just don't want to create another one that's like, oh, it's going to sit there for twenty more years because well, there can and I, this is not about you in particular. Like, we've got sewer now. Who cares if we're actually annexed? And we don't bother because we're busy with many other things.
Yeah, that is, you know, ultimately a danger if it does takes twenty years and and we are all retired. We're all going to retire in the next twenty years, I hope.
Never.
Never. Oh, you're right. Those are the kinds of things.
There's a page to say as soon as possible, and I'm aware it's not now.
Yep, yep.
You initiate the process.
I want to, when she touches, she's in.
Then the the idea of uh upon contiguity, uh, owner, their developer, successors or assigns will will cause annexation. Cause of request, because that's the other part is there, there's always the request and then you're right to say yes or no.
Right, they initiate.
Yeah, we'll shall apply for.
Shall apply.
Right, but but Paul, I wouldn't agree necessarily that this would, her property or the surrounding properties will never annex. Um, I definitely would not say never.
Thank you.
Uh, yeah, they'll they'll agree that they'll annex at some point. The only question is when? Um, that's, we're kicking around. Um, the app can be willing to sign a a a consent to annexation. So at any point, uh, once the line meets her line, the applicant would be brought in as long as that consent's on file.
Well, they wouldn't be brought in unless we pursue it or they ask.
Or some automatic. Or or some other developer that wants to get uh to annex and needs her property in to become contiguous. That developer would undertake the annexation of her property as part of a larger package. That's how this usually happens.
I think it's it's okay because our developers aren't always necessarily the most ambitious group when it comes to assembling consent to annex as well. They want oftentimes they want their contiguity and the the path of least resistance is what they're going to look for. They're not necessarily going to start investigating the great opportunity to get their triple majority in the largest swath. They're they're going to look at what is, how few properties do I have to to bring in to get from point A to point B, get my triple majority? And and we often, Kevin and I find ourselves saying, well, we think you need to investigate one block further south like this one. We we want to bring in pieces. We don't want to simply have a um, those that have the valid consents to come in, come in and leaving, you know, we want to see the triple majority. So we want to bring in pieces that don't have valid consents to annex as a part of triple majority so that we get logical boundaries of those and we blend those who want to come in, who have um, bound themselves to come in along with those who may have right to service and haven't necessarily bound themselves to come in. So we we're looking for that kind of that magic number to make sense of things like consolidated cattle Stella Lane, St. Charles Place that you saw in the past, the menagerie of do's and don'ts to get the triple majority so that you brought in a neighborhood.
I think Megan's brought up an important point. It sounds like it could be solved by the shell annex. Li- li- language. Can you guys move ahead with that? Do we have, we go on this or we're all like thumbing up or like, is this a, is this a motion?
This does not require um emotions, really just directing staff to uh, if you give us kind of the forward direction, then it's for Kevin and and Dustin to continue working with Ms. Legosha. If not, if you say no, not interested, then the conversation ends here.
Can you explain what you mean by shell annex? Just from own application?
What I what I heard Dan say is the idea would be when Ms. Legosha becomes adjacent, it's not the city can go make her annex. It's she she shall initiate the annexation. So as soon as she touches, she will come in. Megan's pointed out that there there there's a number of properties which if we went and chased them would have to annex, but that's time that we don't have. Uh, Megan, Zach.
Yes, so I, in addition to the five requirements, it looks like staffs already identified. I would love some level of six, then hopefully you and Dan can knock out what that appropriately is, but.
If there's five of you, I I understand what you're getting at.
Oh, yeah, I guess.
I mean, just, again, I need a motion. I need four of seven.
Exactly. Uh.
So are are there other counselors who would like that condition? We're not making, okay.
We don't have to.
Um, can I move that we add a condition about when the property becomes contiguous to city limits? They shall apply for annexation.
Moved by Saunders.
I will second.
Second by Stupina. Any discussion? I have a discussion. Is this going to give you what you need to move forward?
Yeah, we we have what we need.
Yep. Heidi, is this like going to get you what you need? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
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 Post. Chair votes high. Heidi gets connected. You're welcome. This is a difficult situation where this is like a scenario that it's not the intent of the policy, but without the policy, other bad stuff is happening. So you've got kind of.
Thank you very much.
Okay, uh, moving on to energy and emissions.
I have a brief presentation for you guys as well, so I'm going to pull.
Oh, this is terrible. You just stood up. Can we take a four minute break and then you'll, great, thanks.
Thank you, Paul.
Okay, Haley. Hold on just a second. Something's happening. What's happening?
I didn't turn on the mic.
Good, thanks, okay.
So I'll start over. Energy use and emissions, and this is for city owned buildings and fleet only. So Karen was more the city and community as a whole. This is just our buildings and our fleet. And so a little bit on the project scope, this falls under your council work plan goal of creating a more environmentally sustainable and resilient community. The purpose of this assessment is to one, evaluate annual energy use and emissions for city owned buildings and fleet compared to our twenty eighteen baseline. And two, review how current and proposed future energy savings projects can reduce energy use and emissions and help the city meet its goal of being at net zero emissions by twenty thirty. And so I'm going to go into some graphs and I know that they're kind of small types. So let me know if you have any questions. The visual is more important than the actual values. But these are our energy use and emissions across the city as a whole in terms of Pacific Power electricity use, Northwest Natural, natural gas and fuel, premium regular gasoline and diesel from our twenty eighteen baseline to twenty twenty two. So I use calendar year totals for this, so I don't have anything so far where what date with where we're at for twenty twenty three, but it's not included in this analysis. And then this, let's see if I can get them all on there, is a basic breakdown over the last five years of our energy use by energy source. So Pacific Power is by far our biggest user, followed by fuel, followed by natural gas. And fuel and natural gas have switched somewhat some years, gotten close together, some years been farther apart, but Pacific Power is by far our largest energy use. And a lot of that is due to Pacific Power being a lot of wastewater treatment plant power, which is by far our largest energy consumer. So the wastewater treatment plant and then Fire N M S Public Works and City Hall. These three little ones, and it says it here, are the flooring station, Wilson Reservoir and the Riverdale Reservoir. And this is just an average. I did do all the graphs and they look very similar to this. So going into completed and proposed projects and offsets. So to get to where we're going to be at twenty thirty five, I take where we're at and I kind of calculate and forecast out with what we've planned to do, what we have completed, how we can get to that goal. So with that, I've included these completed projects and proposed projects. And I have them split out here by energy source and then by building. And these I've calculated based off of current market landscape analysis for how much energy like a digester uses at an average wastewater treatment plant. And then our size kind of extrapolating what that could be for us. Once we actually go to the implementation stage, we'll get a lot more of the actual, this is what you could see being offset. So for right now, these are estimates on this proposed project side. So with that, I graphed our total estimated offsets by source. So the twenty eighteen to twenty twenty two are the offsets that I believe were in play to make those totals. So the totals themselves are accurate. I went back through and tried to figure out where the offsets would be to those totals based off of what I did for the forecasted in the future. So Pacific Power is also our greatest offset. And a lot of that is due to that twenty twenty five is when the inline hydro would go into effect and that is six hundred. I take where we're at and I kind of calculate and forecast out with what we've planned to do, what we have completed, how we can get to that goal. So with that, I've included these completed projects and proposed projects. And I have them split out here by energy source and then by building. And these I've calculated based off of current market landscape analysis for how much energy, like a digester uses at an average wastewater treatment plant, and then our size, kind of extrapolating what that could be for us. Once we actually go to the implementation stage, we'll get a lot more of the actual, this is what you could see being offset. So for right now, these are estimates on this proposed project side. So with that, I graphed our total estimated offsets by source. So the 2018 to 2022 are the offsets that I believe were in play to make those totals. So the totals themselves are accurate. I went back through and tried to figure out where the offsets would be to those totals based off of what I did for the forecasted in the future. So Pacific Power is also our greatest offset. And a lot of that is due to that 2025 is when the inline hydro would go into effect, and that is 650,000 kilowatt hours a year. And so that's that big jump there, and then the digester gas mix even 2027 is another big jump. And then after that, it somewhat balances out, and this.
I guess it balances, and then it kind of, we lose offsets, and I'm wondering what that's from.
So let me tell you.
Sorry, we're jumping.
No, please. And yeah, feel free to jump in at any time. So in general, there was large offsets in 2019, 2020 based off of our Blue Sky. So Blue Sky and future Blue Sky green tariff, which currently I just have it estimated that we will stay in our current block. We have about 170 blocks that we purchased through the Pacific Power Blue Sky program. So just continuing that along, I am tracking the green tariff program and I'm part of the working group from the Public Utility Commission. So I'm trying to track that to see where we can be. That's progressing much faster in PGE territory than it is in PAC Power territory. So I'm not entirely sure what that'll look like, but that could be a significant offset as well in the future. Those are the only two that we actually like go into and directly pay for as a direct offset. Everything else is seasonal impacts, COVID impacts, that's why 2019, 2020, 2021 are very variable. And I have kind of diminishing COVID impacts from now to 2035 just with more hybrid and remote work, less vehicle miles traveled in general. I put it's a small percent. I think it's like 45% after 2025, but I did want to put some level in there. And then general energy, energy efficiency improvements and efficiency degradation. So that's where you're seeing where it's starting to go down. These projects that we've implemented in 2018 earlier and to 2025 start to then lose energy efficiency. So while we're still positive in the general, we are including that as well. That's the big thing there. Any other questions while I'm on this?
Will it make sense to go to Energy Trust or somebody and spruce up those prior installations so that they get more efficient again?
We could, and that could be, and I'll go into it in a little bit for potential projects, things that we could do in the future. So with that, and you'll see that it kind of matches this next. So this is our annual energy use and emissions. So again, based off of the forecast, and I calculate the emissions based off of set and forecasted emissions factors for Pacific Power, Northwest Natural, and fuel. And so this is just kind of showing our energy use. So where the offset is higher, the energy use is lower. And then the emissions, and this is a lot of decrease due to a lot of the inline hydro and Pacific Power is sourcing more renewable energy. So their emission factor is dropping off significantly. It's dropping off very quickly because they have a goal to be net zero by 2040. So just a couple notes here. So this, the graph that you just saw, assumed that the offsets that were in the one above it were included. But if no offsets were included, like if we were to just do whatever we did in 2022 and continue on, like assuming no offsets, there was no seasonality, there was no COVID, there was no projects, there was nothing. With that declining emission factors from Pacific Power, we would still show a significant drop in emissions. And that is something I wanted to note that our goal is to be net zero emissions, not net zero energy use. So we'll still have potentially significant energy use being offset through either renewable sources or Blue Sky green tariff offsets. So this next graph is showing that if we stayed exactly the same, we would still end up at 2035, so we wouldn't get the steep early offset in energy or emission factors, but you would end up in about 100 metric tons of CO2 equivalent by 2035 if we did nothing, and that is just due to reducing emission factors. Any questions on that? I'm seeing some confused faces. So this is our energy use here, and I converted everything to kilowatt hours. So this is Pacific Power, which is already in kilowatt hours. I converted Northwest Natural and Thirms to kilowatt hours in fuel and gallons to kilowatt hours. So that's our total energy use, and then this is what we're trying to get to zero. So it's our emissions, and they're calculated in metric tons of CO2 equivalent.
Blue bars are energy use, gray line is emissions.
Line is emissions.
Okay, that was, that was where I was.
Okay.
Yep.
I got there.
And. It doesn't. So the no forecasted is just keeping exactly what we did in 2022 just to show that how significant of an impact emission factors really do have on this. So with that, our current progress to our net zero by 2035 goal, and again, in emissions, is we're at 78% with all the offsets. So with the graph of the offsets and everything included in that, if we were to do nothing else, we would be at 78%, which means we have an additional 22% that we have to figure out how to do something with to actually meet our goal. And that is with this general breakdown of annual energy emissions. So Pacific Power drops off very quickly. Again, this does include the dehydro here, and it includes just the declining emission factors. And I did want to point out Northwest Natural, so they have a goal to be or approaching net zero by 2050. So this, I looked up their kind of Destination Zero report, and they had a bunch of different scenarios. So I kind of went through and averaged different ones, what I thought could work for our community, and I added those in. So the emission factor is declining, but it's declining much slower than Pacific Power's. And then I'm going into our gap analysis, so how to get us to net zero by 2035. And this is just kind of that same thing, 78%, so we've reduced to 399 from a little over 1,800 by 2035. And an additional savings of 89 metric tons of CO2 equivalent may be realized through potential projects. And these projects are the fire stations, solar plus storage, wastewater treatment plant cogeneration, and alternative fuel use such as renewable diesel. And these are included as potential and not actually included by analysis, either with the scope, how the general energy landscape is looking, or in terms of like wastewater treatment plant, waiting for other projects to get done and figure out how those projects will impact our energy use at the city to see if wastewater treatment plant cogeneration is even feasible. We did look at that a couple years ago and decided to wait a few years. So just with those things, I just left them off of my full analysis, but added them in here to show that we would get to 83% if we were to implement those that have been proposed but aren't being proposed as reported very aggressively at this point. And then this goes into what we could do that hasn't been proposed but are just general items that we could follow to get to net zero. So purchasing additional Blue Sky blocks, enrolling in green tariff, undergoing fuel switching and building retrofits, doing medium and heavy-duty fleet transitions, and exploring alternative fuel use. And a mix of strategies must be implemented. I want to highlight that because there's three different energy sources. So we'll have to highlight each energy source, even though in the analysis, they are all converted to kilowatt hours. And I wanted to note this here, that we don't have exact associated costs because they are unknown at this time. But Blue Sky, green tariff, and alternative fuel will likely have a lower financial impact. Not to say that it's not still significant, but lower than fuel switching, building retrofets, and fleet transition. And this is just kind of a breakdown in 2035, again, with that mix of strategies, where those 300-odd metric tons of CO2 equivalent are actually located, either with Pacific Power, Northwest Natural. And I split fuel into gasoline, which is gasoline and premium and diesel just because those are wildly different projects between gasoline and diesel. Going into a few next steps, for me, just monitoring savings from existing projects and implementing proposed energy saving projects as approved by you the council, and updating this review, updating this analysis annually and reviewing with you our progress to net zero goals. Because I mean, I've done it now for three years, and it's changed every year. And into the future, evaluating recommended potential energy saving projects and programs, especially those that would decrease energy use and emissions from natural gas and fuel, monitoring potential energy offset programs like the Green Tariff Program, and determining any long-term actions needed to meet the city's net zero by 2035 goal. And that one's kind of a catch-all because the energy landscape is changing significantly right now. There could be technologies that we want to pursue that do not exist yet. So just continuing to monitor those because 2035 seems both very close and very far away. And that is what I have.
Counselors.
I think that fed into a really hard-to-answer question, so I'm gonna put you on the spot for, because it very much depends on future council and staff action and technology that may not exist. But you know, we're not reaching net zero in our current projections. We have years in between to get there. Do you think we're on a good path that it's achievable? And you know, if we sustain our current level of effort, we would make it there? Or do we need to increase investment or look hardly in the backseat or?
I think maintaining our current level of effort is sufficient over the next like two-year period while all of the changes from federal and state policies, incentive programs, all the infrastructure funding that's funneling through, there's a lot of that that's going to energy as well. So the energy landscape is very up and down right now. So once that settles out a little bit more, we can then take more aggressive approaches. That now we're seeing this, this is on the horizon and taking those steps. And I mean, I will continue to do everything in the background. It's that significantly aggressively pursuing that I don't think we're quite there yet just because I don't want to take anything and then a little bit later like, oh, this would have been the perfect program, such as Green Carrot. Like at this point, we could increase our blocks of Pacific Power and offset more. I mean, each blocks is 100 kilowatt hours a month. And what I've seen, what I've been told by Pacific Power, is that's likely to be what it is for the short term. So we could do that, but we're getting close to our Green Tariff. Is that a better to be involved in? Those kind of questions that I don't have the answer to right now.
Thanks, thank you.
Counsel, could I also chime in?
Please.
One of the things that we will talk about in a future budget meeting is for next year, we're planning or proposing a facility master plan study for the wastewater treatment plant. We know that's our biggest source of emissions and energy use. And we also know that our plant is really out of date. And so I think in that, we will probably identify some opportunities for some energy savings, both with new technology, but also just bringing our current things up to a higher standard. So just wanted to note that that's a longer-term piece, but we hope to start that with a study in the coming year.
And to that point, those are those kind of actions that could be used with Energy Trust incentives. Replacing generators, things like that do fall under just those standard programs that Karen was talking about.
Wow, thank you so much, Haley. That was fantastic and very thoughtful analysis. I really, really appreciated it. Yeah, I mean, I think you covered, covered the bases. Seems like gasoline's probably a big one that transitioned to electric vehicles, you know, which I agree, I mean, it's becoming more and more prevalent all the time. Probably more and more within our range to actually do it, especially the bigger vehicles.
Correct.
Right, and then in the short term, renewable diesel. Are you making further inroads into that coordination one?
I have met with the transportation from City of Portland, who is also a member of the Energy Council. And she sat down with me and walked me through exactly the actions that City of Portland booked to do renewable diesel. They did it on a much larger, the entire City of Portland, not like City of Portland, but City of Portland, switched to renewable diesel over the next like 10 years. They have percentage points that they're doing. So that is a long-term significant option that we could pursue that, okay, Hood River Supply, that's where we get our fuel. What would it take for you to only source renewable diesel? It's a lot harder in rural areas because of a lot of our stations only have like a diesel tank and a gas tank, whereas in the larger like Portland, they have six or seven. So they can switch one over to renewable diesel easily while still making a slower transition. Here, we can do higher blends, and renewable diesel, you can blend at any level. With regular, it is the exact same properties, just not that emissions that come along with it. So we could switch to a 50%, 75%, we could do a long term if we chose to. But it would take a lot of coordination.
Yeah, and I think we all realize that 2035 is an ambitious goal, but you know, I really appreciate keeping our eye on the ball and working stepway towards trying to. Thank you. Thanks, Haley. Doug, thank you.
Thank you.
Rich. That's not so fair. Let's make sure Rich gets the vote.
I'm far away from City Hall. Haley and I are last. This is not as fun as the energy. Oh, wait, is this, I don't know. Yeah, so billings, SIU billings. As we were diving into the surcharging through the IPP program and everything, it was kind of discovered by Jacobs that the billings have been incorrect for all of the industries. And so obviously, we started questioning like, is that true? So we looked into it, took a while to look into it, and sure enough, yes, that is correct. So we've been underbilling the four industries since it seems like July of '21, which is a year and a half. And so the process is Jacobs would put together the billings for the month, send it into our utilities, and then we would bill off that. Apparently in June or July of '21, they went through a software change. The new software spit out numbers that were not correct, and so we just kept going off of that. Yes, and so apparently, early last year, they had brought it to our attention at the city. And you know, not knowing any better, we said, no, everything looks good. We're billing correctly. And I think what happened is we just looked off of what they sent us, and we said, yeah, look, you sent us this, we build this, without really knowing what they were saying. Anyway, so here we are. And so I estimate last year, it was around 100,000 that we did not collect. And so obviously, we want to correct this going forward immediately. For some of the industries, it's a pretty significant increase, which is why I suggested going with the 65%, well, 35% just, or yeah, discount, I guess, whichever way you look at it. The reason is like, for instance, some, some of the peak seasons, like they were getting billed 2,700 under the new, what they should have been billed was like 6,200. So it's a pretty significant increase on some of these months. And so my thought process was rather than just hitting upside the head since it really wasn't their fault that this was happening, that we would kind of phase them in over time. And I guess that's why I'm bringing it to you guys to see if that's okay or if you think we should just go full amount. I think we had spoken to Dan, although he was biking in Italy. His colleagues had chimed in and said, you know, we can do any of those options presented, you know, billing them correctly immediately or phasing them in like this. And so, yeah, that's kind of the background.
Um, prior to July '21, whenever this issue happened, were they paying like the same amount as what they would pay for the, if we paid, if we asked for the full amount going forward? Or did we change something in the interim? For the, if we paid, if we asked for the full amount going forward, or did we change something in the interim?
So before June of twenty one, there were only two industries. And so those two were paying the correct amounts. It just so happens that the two newer industries came on in July, so they both had like one correct billing and then everyone after that was incorrect.
So correct me if I'm wrong, what I'm hearing you say is. We are not imagining. Clawing back the underbillings. We are imagining. Starting now. Either easing them in or suddenly billing them the. Correct amount that they should have been paying all along.
Correct.
So we are not, you are not suggesting the option of. Actually collecting everything we're owed. I just want to, and I'm not saying that's wrong, but I just want to.
Yeah, I'm not.
Think I'm hearing.
Not suggesting that. And I'd spoke with Windsor, who's, you know, in charge of the plant and Jacobs as well and. Yeah, we're not suggesting going after them. For previous buildings.
I I get, you know, we, what, two months ago, whenever we talked about potentially. A massive increase unrelated to this issue.
Correct.
Where does that fit in or when does that fit in or how does that overlap?
Yes, it obviously complicates things because on top of this. Pretty big increase, that's. That's another double, right? So.
When?
Well, that's what we're trying to figure out. I think had we not had this, we probably would be close to doing that right now, but. This is a pretty big, so we're scared of us.
Well, and I guess like, you know, if it. Happens in three months, do they get a twenty five percent discount on current? Rates or twenty five percent discount on whatever the new rate would be.
So I think the other thing we're exploring is. Wayne, you said to your Jacobs, he was basing a lot of his numbers, I think, off of actual paid. And so. This, I think, changes his calculations a little bit, so he's reevaluating that. Yeah, if that makes sense.
Frustrating.
Yes. And and I should, so I I have, you know, off. Sorry. You know, I I had talked with the institutions, I mean, they're they're aware, and that was kind of feedback. It's like, okay, well, you know, we budget. Care for the year, you know. You know, it'd be tough to go. You know. So that's another reason why. A larger initial, you know.
So I'm hearing Steph say, write off the old and ramp up to the new. That's what we're talking.
Yeah, yeah.
It's often nice of us to write off the amount that. That we could have or should have been charging them in the past. And I'm choosing just to. Write that off entirely. That's a nice benefit to those four industries. In the future, you can. Be more diligent on billings, I suppose. Whether we choose to ramp it up or whatever. In my business, if I have a bill, I forecast it for it and I pay for it. It's it's awful nice that we are foregoing the revenue that we have already foregone in the past for under billing. And then. It is also nice if we choose not to even charge our normal rates going forward for the next period of time as the ramp up. As 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 a business, my expectation is to pay my normal bill. On a regular basis.
So which would be suggesting the ramp up is appropriate because their normal bill, well, wrong in our fault. Was.
In the past.
Was their normal bill.
Yeah, and that's.
As far as they knew.
It's nice of us to. Give them a lesser bill in the past.
I I will say from working in the private sector extensively in billing. When you make a mistake, it's your fault and you don't go after. You know, uncollected debts, you know, that you did not. Ask for. However, that's when you're trying to keep a happy customer, et cetera. This is a bit of a different situation. I understand that. I I, may I ask? In other situations and other municipalities that have had this sort of thing, is is there, is there any sort of customary? How did you come up with like the staggered, like, you know? What was the? The impetus for that?
Just talking with other staff, talking with Jacobs, talking with Windsor. I mean, no one has pulled up this situation before.
Yeah.
I was trying to think like if we had under billed. Homeowner, I don't know if it was a large jump, would we find some kind of financial breaking? I couldn't get an answer on that because I don't think that's happened. And if it hasn't, it just ramped up automatically, but we're talking like five, ten dollar, you know, we're not talking large.
Right, right.
Yeah.
So I know the scale is very different, but you know, our last meeting, we talked about the softball club that had been. Getting undercharged and then we decided, oh, the fee schedule is the fee schedule and. Let's charge and. I I guess I do, I mean, I I do know the scale is different, but what do you see that's similar or different, or why would we treat this one? Differently.
Talking about the incorrect ones or?
Oh, no, I saw I I'm fully, as much as it's saying, so I'm like the the back bill, we ate it, our fault. Fine, I'm just talking about the twelve month transition.
If I, if I could chime in, I think one, please, thank you, Rich, thank you so much for presenting a really. Difficult topic, you know, definitely not excited to bring this. I think one other factor here is our relationship with the significant industrial users in which we need to move toward a surcharge. System. We certainly have heard some frustration with them about what that might cost. So to, I think, city staff. Trying to make this, one, put this behind us as quickly as possible and two, trying to ease this pain so that we can continue on. The bigger goal of instituting the surcharges.
Yeah, I think the difference between. This situation in the softball club is that these people provide a ton of jobs. In my opinion.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Absolutely.
We took we took softball from the thousand to six.
Yeah, yeah. Sorry.
And I'm aware the scale is different.
I I I think I'm hearing agreement here. If we can, we can all live with Rich's suggestion. Am I wrong about that?
It's unfortunate.
It is, it is. And again, the timing is was not great with all the surcharging, so that obviously complicated that.
You know.
Don't don't forget to flex the fact that.
Oh, yeah.
First of all, we're eating the hundred grand and we're ramping you up. Like, come on, like, we're doing all right here, I think.
That would definitely be brought up.
Anything else on this? Fun thing?
It's great that we're in a position that we're able to make this kind of decision.
Okay, thanks, Rich.
Okay, thank you.
City Recorder, Jen, what do you got? City Manager, what do you got?
I have a number of items. First, I'd like to call on Chief Leonard Damian, who I believe he's available on Zoom. Give him a second to come on camera.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, good.
Just a quick little note, I just wanted to give you guys some good news. If you remember back in November. Some of you heard me get asked the council for permission for a grant. And we applied back in November, hoping to hear in December. January, February, wrap it all the way up into March and now May. And we just heard last week that we were awarded the grant. So this is about a three hundred and eighty thousand dollar grant. Matching, so we can add another firefighter.
That's great, thank you.
Yeah.
That's that good news.
So I didn't want to belabor along. Our delivery style in a PowerPoint, but I did want to share with you guys the good news and we'll talk more about it tomorrow at the budget meeting.
Thanks, Chief. Great.
All right.
Congratulations. Thank you, Leonard. When I was speaking to Leonard earlier today, he was saying, I think in like the last five years, five, six years. The fire department has brought in eight hundred thousand, nine hundred thousand dollars worth of grants. So really thankful to the chief and to the department for all of their hard work. On a sadder note, I want to. I want to note the passing of Ed Sherrill. He was a fire chief for the community, for the city of Hood River from ninety six to ninety nine. He was a volunteer firefighter starting in nineteen sixty five. And he was one of our first paid career firefighters in nineteen eighty five. So he had a long. History of service here in Hood River. He also went on to be the fire chief of Black Butte. His fire funeral service will be on May thirteenth and we will have firefighters and our tower will be in attendance, so. Happy that Hood River, that he can be recognized in this way by our, by our city. And then just. Two other things is you know how I love to like have sign up sheets? So I've got a couple items for you. One is, as you know, Jackie. Our community engagement coordinator has been working on some community cleanups. I've heard from council in the past to desire to. You know, to meet members of the public, not just in formal settings or at events, but also to kind of work side by side with community members. So as I've heard from residents who have been expressed an interest in community cleanup, so. I think our first one will be Saturday, June thirteenth, we'll be doing, or June third. Doing that one in partnership with Solve. And then Jackie has also arranged for a number of. Puncture vine poles. I understand people feel very strongly about puncture vines.
We do.
In coordination with the Hood River Soil and Water Conservation District. So. We'd love to see at least one or two council members at each of these, a good chance to interact with residents and I'll pass that around after tonight's meeting.
Now, I think the two thirds, the solve one, that's across.
Yes.
Our inbox.
Yep, yep. So I'm saying that publicly and then also just to, you know, get you to put your name on on paper and commit to me, so. And then we've been doing council recaps, those videos. We've been doing, the signup sheet is finished and so I'm looking for someone to do it tonight. It was like a very easy council meeting to recap. And then I've got a sheet for the next couple meetings, so I'll pass that around as well after the meeting is finished. Thank you.
Committee reports, Grant.
I have done nothing for any committees.
I can't remember when. I signed, I signed the CFA. Does that make sense to everybody? Like, we agreed and so there was like a ceremonial thing and we all went. So that's moving ahead.
CFA for the bridge.
For the bridge. The, we formed the entity, the Bridge Authority. On that topic, the way it works is the county appoints. So Hood River County Points Three, Coqueta County Points Three, to make a commission of six. The county has asked the city. For a recommendation. For them to appoint. I was talking about it with a. By state working group and we thought that perhaps a. Kind of a financing person. You don't, you don't need to know how to build a bridge. But like knowing how to like manage like. So far, like over a hundred million dollars in grants, like a banky kind of a person might be a good direction to go. So there's been some. Recruitment efforts in that. Or. A counselor. I don't understand why you're sneaking.
You just kind of looked over my direction and be like, oh, finance person.
Or would we want to have a counselor serve on that? As our recommendation and Grant has been. Participating a lot in that, so I wanted to, A, ask if any of us would be interested in being considered. Or failing that. So those are, and 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 it's just a recommendation, the county appoint, the county appoint, so. I would say by by the middle and. By the end of this week, if you could let me know, if you'd like to be considered as our nominee to be considered.
Can I talk a little bit after this, fill up more detail about it if I want to throw my hat in the ring on it?
Yes. So that's that.
Can I ask, I mean. I think counselor right now, especially where the bridge at, makes sense, but like long term, are we supposed to just pull names out of our? Community knowledge or are we supposed to be putting out a like advertisement for recruitment? For this kind of thing? Okay.
Again, the county makes the appointment. But the county has chosen to say, hey, city, you have a suggestion.
Right, that's, okay, that feels very weird. Like we would recruit to then send it to their recruitment.
It's nice that they ask.
Yeah.
Some of these commissions end up being. Elected folks, like I was on MCOG and it was like the mayor and the commissioner and Zanmiller is on McCad and it's like, it actually is. And Kristen and I actually had a disagreement about. Good idea, is that a bad idea? Is it either? That, and I've been working on the evals. For our municipal judge and our city attorney. I've decided. On a form that I would recommend that we use. So I have the one sheet here. And it just.
Tonight or something, it just.
I emailed it this afternoon. I'm sorry.
What I would request is.
And don't feel like you have to have something to say on every topic, but any input you can give. About the performance of our city attorney would be useful. And I'll gather that together and follow up with Dan and Abigail and figure out how to. But but this is the, this is the beginning of the information collecting. All right? And I went to traffic court. And watched our judge. That's a very intense place to be, you guys, because. You know, people who can afford it mail in the fine. People who can't afford it enroll the stop sign. Owe two hundred and fifty six bucks that they ain't got. The judge was gracious and thoughtful and firm and avuncular and it was quite a. It's part of the social service network. Like, you can't be rolling stop signs and. You know, two hundred and fifty six bucks hurts. If you come, he he dropped it by forty to two sixteen. The highest fine was four hundred and eighty eight dollars for a guy who was doing eighty four in the fifty five. Maybe sixty, eighty four miles an hour. So, you know, there's higher fees. It was a roomful of people who had been cited and the judge was. Graciously and firmly working his way through. Now. I don't know. I don't know that we need to. Have this same level of eval process for the judge that we have for the attorney because most of us don't interact with him. I could go out and solicit like. Prosecutors or something, but. My suggestion on the judge was, I would write up my reaction of attending court and like, put that in his file, like, this is. A data point in the judge's performance. And then we call that good. So that's my. That's my suggestion for that. I see nodding heads on that. That's all right, good. So we're gonna have the judge be that and we're, you you have received the city attorney and please get it. Back to to me. Okay? Thank you. That's my committee, I guess. Megan?
I don't have anything.
Tim?
Nothing for me.
No committees.
Hey, that takes me to mayor comments. Do I have anything? I don't think I have anything else. Grant?
Mayor, Mayor, would you like to mention that you hosted, or you emceed Senator Wyden's event yesterday? Maybe have some comments on. Sure. What happened there?
So Senator Wyden had a town hall. It was at the the high school. Abigail was there. Thanks, Abigail. I was struck by some of the comments. I mean, he's, this was his one thousand fiftieth town hall, like. You know, he's heard every question and he handled them all graciously, including should we pull out of Ukraine? How come the First Amendment was trampled with COVID masks? Can we get bipartisan? Collaboration on anything? I mean, it was. What about you, Abigail? Anything that stands out?
Counselor Pulson was also there, so he might have thoughts, but I would say there was a lot of conversation about housing, which is something that we watch carefully in the city.
Yeah, I was there. I've been to. A few of his now and. They've bled together quite a bit. So about a month ago or so, I was at the one in the Dallas and that one sounded. Almost the same into this one, some of the same jokes, that sort of thing, so. Which, I mean. Happens, you can only have, work on so much material. When you're a senator. Yeah, just. Usual asked and answered questions, nothing really major as far as I could tell. You spent more time with him than I did.
All right, any questions about that?
I'll just mention, I don't know that we have anyone listening, but there are ballots out. They're due May sixteenth. I believe. Yes, so everyone make sure you vote.
Good, yes, Tim?
Vote.
Doug?
Vote.
Vote.
Vote, okay. That takes us to the time for the executive session, right? Great, so I'm gonna read the script. The council will now meet in executive session pursuant to ORS one ninety two. Six sixty one E to conduct deliberations with persons designated. Designated by the governing body to negotiate real property transactions. Representatives of the news media and designated staff are allowed to attend. All others, members of the audience are asked to leave the room. And we will end the public broadcast. No decision may be made nor final action. No decision may be made nor final action taken in executive session. This executive session is anticipated to last twenty-five minutes. At the end of this executive session, this city council meeting will be adjourned. No action will be taken. We will now discontinue the live feed and recording. Thanks, Haley.